They said Superintendent Jim Colquhoun, I will open tonight's meeting because we don't have a chair at this point. But I am going to ask the board to amend the agenda because it came to my attention that under reorganization of the board, it says vice chair clerk and appointment committee. We're also reorganizing and voting a chair, so could I ask for a motion to amend the agenda to include voting for the chair?
Show.
Sorry, can you do that? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you. All right, item, agenda item number one, reorganization, reorganization of the board. At this time, I'm asking for nominations for the chair of the Mount Anthony High School District Board of Directors.
I would nominate Leon Johnson for the chair.
Is there a second?
No second.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Stephanie Mulligan.
Second. Moved and seconded. I don't think I have any members. For new members, this is who I see as joining us electronically. Cat TV, Richard Bump, Chad Gordon, Megan Morgan-Paluzzi, and Don Campbell, so no board members. So, yeah, spare piece, some papers so we can do a ballot.
Oh, yeah, you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Usually when we have more, oh wait, I gotta ask, are there any other nominations? All right, nominations are closed. Thank you. Before we vote?
Yeah.
About, all right. Would you like to go first? Oh, well, we're doing a ballot vote, I thought what you meant you would like to address the board for your nomination. Is that not what I?
Yes, that's, but then we have two, that's.
Right, that's why we're doing a ballot vote, we have more than one candidate, so traditionally in the past when we've had more than one, we don't, we don't, we do a secret ballot rather than show in hands, the more democratic way to do that.
And we normally ask people to speak as to why they would like to be board members.
That's what I asked, I said, would you like to address the board?
Well, yes, but I didn't know whether Stephanie is there.
Well, I'll let you go first and then I'll let Stephanie, you were nominated first.
Thank you. Well, just like to make sure I address the board here. This past year has been as the board chair from really difficult coming out of COVID. And I very much like to be the board chair again for all of the things that has transpired and all of the requirements of a board chair. The board chair has the responsibility to do all the liaison informational periodic veristics of all the things that are required of a board in relation to the Mount School Board. It's easy to take the function of a, of a board chair without knowing what the requirements are for what the board members and the chair should be doing. So I had a lot of learning to do this past year. And one of the things we learned is conversation, the salary information that was particularly different. And we made those changes and recommendations for all of the board members to go from a certain amount and for the chair. There were countless nights and days, if you take a look at this pack here, is what I'm worried about. I have to, the board chair has to read that every month and know all of the things that are required of board members and ask them whether they complied with certain things along that line and understand them so that we can do the job that we're supposed to be doing as board members when it comes to representing the board. Not just to say, yes, I can say yes and pass something, but we need to understand it and do our job. And so that's what I've stood for, for this year as a board chair. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions that anybody would like to ask me about what was done by me this year.
Any questions for Leon? I see none. Stephanie, would you like to address the board?
Sure. This, I, I have held several roles in our educational system. Administrator at Southwest Tech and treasurer and assistant treasurer of SBSU, ESD, and MNU. I respect that there's a lot of problems that has to happen as a board chair and I'm willing to take that on and work to make sure that we can facilitate good meetings.
Any questions for Stephanie from members of the board? Okay, comment period's closed, you all have a ballot in front of you. If you please write the name of either Stephanie or Leon. Hold it in half, please, and pass it back to me. Over here. Jonathan, would you verify the vote with me?
Yeah.
Stephanie Mulligan, Leon Johnson, Stephanie, 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 Leon, Stephanie, Leon. I'd like to be in two people, five, two. All right, three, five votes for Stephanie, Leon, three. Stephanie, if you're meeting.
You two would like to vice chair and clerk?
Thank you for your service. Now we will elect a vice chair for nominee opening. Nominate. Yeah, we have a nomination for.
Second.
We have any other nominations for vice chair? None, or can we have a vote, all those in favor? All opposed? That's just a, oh, thank you. One, one extension. Now we will go on to clerk. Can I have a nomination for a clerk?
Well, Jackie does it now, right?
No, he, I think.
He's retired from that?
Jackie resigned.
Resigned.
From the board?
Or term expired and she didn't.
She didn't rewatch and.
I didn't realize that.
She didn't tell us until the end, you know, at the end of the, had we.
Yeah, appoint her.
Nominate. He did such a good job on the other board, he does.
And you just, the clerks actually know that Hattie West assists them in all, right?
Do we have a nomination for Scott? Do we have a second? Do we have any nominations?
You accept.
Do you accept, oh, yeah, sorry, that's a good question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, extend one extension.
You need to elect representatives to the SU board, that is not appointment, that's by election of the board, who that represents will be.
That's on this agenda?
Uh, it should, no, it's, it's not, but that's part of the reorganization.
That is part of the reorganization?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, can I, do we have two representatives?
Three. That you asked for nominations.
Have, I have nominations for the SU. Um, it's going, going to the.
Punctually issue.
Punctually issue meetings, is there someone who's on it now, one of those firm?
I'm on it.
I'm on it.
Yeah, you're on it for SBS.
I'm on it for the ESD until, well, essentially until the next, until tomorrow's meeting, right?
Right, they reorganize tomorrow night.
They reorganize tomorrow.
They may or may not do.
Right. But I'm currently on that.
Meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, but we may cancel it. If whoever gets elected tonight and tomorrow night, if enough people can't be there, we'll reschedule it because it's, it's regular scheduled night, is, is the fourth Wednesday of the month. But, um, because these two meetings got bumped up to the weather, maybe real short notifications for whoever gets on it. So, well, I will see how that plays out. So.
One, to answer your question, it's just like you attend the monthly meetings and then there's also a committee work that, there's committee assignments on that as well.
But there's already people on it, obviously, so I should keep.
Well.
Well, no, because we, we redo it.
Every year.
Oh, but they just said that you're.
No, but for the elementary.
You're on it. That was, well, no, I was on it.
Oh, now, it is, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was three people from this board, Jackie Kelly, Susan and myself.
Unless they get renominated, you still, because you do.
Yeah, and that's all. And so you was asking, what do they do?
Right, determine, yeah, but if you're already on there, then we don't need to worry about.
And you have to get re-nominated.
Right, so nominate.
For everybody to understand what is the SU, that is, is that's the board where all the representation from the other boards come on and the main functions, what we normally do is work through all of our policy procedures through SBSU as opposed to the board along that line. So that's. And it, it all, and then saying.
Our only has three representatives, the union elementary district has three representatives, this board has three representatives, and the non-operating school district has one representative.
Do you have any nominations for the SBSU?
I'll nominate Susan.
We have one nomination, do we kind of vote for all three at once, or?
Do it anyway.
Okay, we have one nomination for Susan, do we have, okay, we, do we have two?
Someone needs a second.
Second.
I'll nominate Leon as well.
A second. Okay. No, I'm happy, that's, that's great.
Are you interested?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, I just want even more information.
I didn't want to nominate you if you weren't interested.
I got more information and I'm good, I got all the information I need.
Dave, any interest?
Oh, I'm waiting, nominate Terry.
How about Terry, he's, he's got lots of energy.
You want to win, I want to. Wait, what? Wait, uh, when, when are, this is, these are on Wednesdays?
What's Wednesday, right?
Wednesday's a hard day for you.
Yeah, yeah, Wednesdays are hard, it's tough for me. And if I'm not covering another school board's meeting, so.
I mean, I don't know, either one of you want, I mean, it depends, or Stephanie, you're in, there's four members, I think.
Yeah.
That could possibly, I'm feeling like we're, we're short on members for the ESD. Right. It's gonna be, it could be a, a reach to get three. Yeah. On that board, from, from that board.
But we're also short on this board.
So you don't have to do three, you're limited to attend, you know, you're gonna, you may fill some of these empty seats and I'll talk about how that happens soon during this meeting. I believe there was a board a couple of years ago that held one seat open until they were back to full strength. So you could, you could, you know, if you only have two, don't force somebody to, to be here then.
Should we have, does it make sense as a board, do you want to have a vote to decide to leave one of the seats empty since we do not have?
I think you have to do, just vote how many nominations you have.
So we have two nominations, one for Susan and one for Leon for the SBSU board, is there any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Was that a said aye?
I ask whoever Mac is to identify themselves before I remove you from the meeting.
My name is Mark Pent, Mark Pat. I've been here before.
If we, our meeting was just hacked, I just want to make sure that you weren't part of that.
I don't know who that was, uh, yeah, that was extremely inappropriate.
Okay, it's your meeting.
That was your inauguration.
I know people say like our meeting's been hacked, we publish our link, right? So anybody can join the meeting. So it wasn't like Jesus, second one, I closed, right?
Okay, um, I think we.
Cat TV, did you get that? Because, you know, I, I think they're, Cat TV might be broadcasting live, so, yeah.
Okay, um, I think where we were at was, we're going to, all, all in favor of Susan and Leon being on the SBSU board? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Okay, um, Susan and Leon.
So I, I can address, it's, it's, I was just saying this under the superintendent's report, but it seems more appropriate now. You do have some open seats and the board has two options, you can decide not to fill them. You don't have to fill them because the authorities didn't, but you can, as a union element, as a union board, it is this board's authority to fill the seats where if we were like a standalone, back when we had individual elementary boards, it was actually the select board that then got together to fill the seat of an empty seat. But in a union board, it's not, so it's your decision, if one, you want to fill the seats and if two, what is the process you're going to use? I can tell you the process down in the past, we'd make an announcement at tonight's meeting that you were soliciting candidates who were interested. They have to live in the town where the opening is. Then you have at a subsequent meeting, boards, if you have more than one candidate or even if you just, you have the right to interview that candidate and then you vote to have them join the board. So I guess the first question is, does this board wish to fill the empty seats?
Yes.
Pretty obvious question, so my suggestion is that you would then, we'll put on our website that we're soliciting people to, what the open seats are, which I believe is what, Powell?
Is there?
Bennington.
One in Bennington, one in Powell.
One, Woodford, yeah. So we will, we'll put that on our website, we're, and you can announce that here tonight. I'll stop and let you announce that to Cat TV if you would.
Sure, if, if they're back.
Yeah.
Um, I have the, Cat TV is here, so.
If we, the board want to have the opportunity to have these letters come in of interest.
And they, they can go to the board chair and the superintendent, choose what they do, or if they come to you, they can send it to us here at care review and then I'll, we'll compile, hopefully that there are at least three who aren't interested.
Okay, um, so, uh, for the general public, anyone who's interested that lives in Bennington, Powell, or Woodford should submit a letter of interest to Superintendent Colquhoun or myself or both and we, um, will review them in the next meeting. Jim, the, for procedure of executor, of executing contracts, do you want to?
Yeah, you have a chair and vice chair, so you can have the board authorize to do that. That's a vote that we take every year, so.
Can I have a motion to have the vice chair and chair have the ability to execute contracts? Can it be a dual motion to, and to authorize them to approve off-warrant cycles? So, you have a second?
Second.
For Wendy, all those in favor? Any extensions?
I know the board can't see this, but Richard Bump is here in the meeting taking minutes.
Moving on to public comments, is there, are there any public comments?
I have a public comment. Policy of acknowledging people who are doing good work, I'd like to suggest the clerks and Fran Godet, our wrestling coach, continued the string of state championships in his first year. Also Rob Short, our ski coach, second year in a row, they, they won state championship and girls were second.
That Jackie deserves a letter as well?
I don't know, yeah. In that line, then, I would think we acknowledge Fran Kenny.
Yeah.
An awful long time. I didn't want to disagree with him, but I, he was always well-prepared, I don't think there's any meetings, and he, he's not for long. Say, when you, if that's okay, Fran was very instrumental in getting our middle school set up on the hill up there in that terms of the curve, but working with the archery tech and everything along that line. So, uh, he saved the district a ton of money in that process, making sure we got things right. So you want to be able to state that, isn't that, and know that, appreciation. So I'm just connecting, get you connected with, so you have one side of the person you step.
Oh, yes, okay.
Hi, I just came to introduce myself, I'm Kristen Almstead and I'm interested in, say my name forward for one of the empty seats, I'm the chair of Bennington.
And I think we had an email from you.
Yes.
Yeah, put that in the pile.
Are there any other public comments?
One, two members of the public here electronically, but I don't see them raising their hands, so. Can I just ask principals, are there, did we, we've got Fran Godet, Rob Short, did we miss? Did we miss anybody? I heard about a pretty impressive. I'm, so that's my report on the principals' report, okay? Absolutely.
People that, are you asking?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just, is there, should, should there be a letter to anybody? And we can revisit that after your report.
Yep.
All right, um, if there's no other public comments, we'll move on to finance. The treasurer's report for January of 2023 and February of 2023 are in the board docs. Can I have a motion to approve that, or is there, are there any comments? With no comments, I have a motion to approve the reports, January, February, and March, as divided as. Any second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? The second, our ID for finance is high school weight room plaque dedication.
And that was suggested by Dave and we also have Chad Gordon in the meeting, both have addressed this in a previous month and we, I told them it would be appropriate to put on the agenda so that it's a listed item to take action on.
So I don't know. I speak to that one, Dan Lachlan made our football program significant, the, uh, in fact, I believe one of the reasons Chad Gordon is coaching football is because he was inspired by Coach Lachlan. Awful lot of the equipment that was in the weight room came from Green Mountain Racetrack and it wouldn't have come if it wasn't for Dan, he did an awful lot. The plaque isn't going to cost us anything, the football team is taking care of us. It seems like a win-win to me and I know Dan's daughters would be appreciative if that happened.
Stephanie.
Miss Chad on.
He's here.
Chad, would you like to add anything?
Uh, no, Dave recapped it pretty well, so thank you, I just was watching to see the board's vote.
Okay, great. I guess we have a motion.
Yeah, it's asking for action.
So.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion around the high school weight platform dedication? Will there be like a mini ceremony or? No, just.
Well, by the way, if you go to the school sometime, you should visit the weight room. It's nicely redone.
Susan, I, to your point, I don't see why we couldn't have some type of.
I think would be a nice suggestion.
Yeah.
Chad, did you hear that suggestion?
I did, I can check with A.D. Reef and possibly family members of the Lachlan family and see if we could set something up.
Be good, thank you.
Okay, um, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor of dedicating the high school weight room to Dan Lachlan?
Lachlan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, great. Uh, we're going to find the consent agenda in the board packet, we have, can I use all of this procedure?
Yeah, unless someone wants, the only time that you may get a chance is someone doesn't want to vote on the minutes because they weren't present, so you might remove that, but that doesn't have to happen either, so.
In the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the last meeting, the 1/26/2023, the war, warrants, retirements, leaves of abs, leave of absence, resignations, and nominations. Has everyone had the opportunity to look through the board? Are, if there any, can I have a motion? Aye, yeah.
That's for the same two items of the whole thing.
Um, I was for the entire one through six, do you have, are there comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay.
On, on the field trips, the number.
Seven.
Yeah, I, I, trip to Panama City High School. So it's in your packet, I spoke with the principal before the meeting here, that there was some items that are concerning, both for the policy and by the travel agency for the, they, uh, the, uh, do whatever down here, it was the CIA in terms of warning for traveling outside the country for Panama. And so we need to be cognizant of that before we approve a trip to go outside the country and that we investigate more, all of those things before we do that, so that's my part, that's up to you, everybody.
Didn't the middle school just return from Canada? Do we have, do we have any, we got out of the country too, we, do we have policies in place for that and things went smoothly?
It did go smoothly, yeah, it's a trip that I would, I'll speak about it a little bit. Yeah. I would take it for sure, I'll speak about it in my principal's department, I have it, but it was, it was a successful trip for sure, yeah.
Leon, are you saying that Panama is a different situation, like, it's not, isn't it from the government?
I'm saying that we, in our policy, there's a section in there that talks specifically about that and we needed to look at that section of the policy, I gave the cop, my property of the policy to Tim that talked about the, uh, the situations in countries of where they're going to be far away from home and where there are, and the number of chaperones that need to be involved there and, and that we needed to. And then when we started the, I started to look at that, I pulled up right before the meeting here, the C, yes, Wendy has it right here, the one, it's, it's considered level two right now for security. And so I'm saying those are the things that you need to be aware of, we need to follow through. If you're moving schools out of trouble before we automatically just say, okay, that's all.
This, yeah, I, I pulled it up because I travel a lot and I sort of get this kind of stuff a lot. And it says, um, that there is, there's four levels, the first one is exercise normal precautions. This is the one next to it, so it's number two, exercise increased caution. And there's three, reconsider travel, and four, do not travel. So right now they feel though Panama is an elevated risk as opposed to Canada isn't an elevated risk at this time. So I think that's what he was trying to say.
Sorry, is this Homeland Security or who's?
It's the State Department. Yeah. I used to teach overseas and so when I would go to different places, I would want to know, yeah, I would want to know. Also you have to have certain vaccinations and so forth when you go to places, so that's why I was, I'm sure the kids will have those done.
This is through a reputable tour student. But this is through a reputable tour, student tour company? Yes, tour. I, you know, I I have the application, but I, I'm assuming all those requirements, nothing.
Yeah, and the concern was that it's a return to travel. There were school trips prior to COVID. And these providers require you to at least reach an agreement that you're going to go and figure out how many people are interested in the trips. You have to basically get on their to-do list. But we can absolutely go back and.
Right, sure. This is for 24th, and this is not this.
No.
This April, so before, I imagine they'll even board approved before there's any money committed by anyone.
Yes, for reference, the United Kingdom is also level two.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Really?
A lot.
Yeah, they, they dispute.
There's already a lot of money already invested by, a lot of parents were already paying.
Well, I'm, I'm not like behind. I'm just looking at it. It's fine.
I think it's a rest in a little more.
Oh, I have no, I have no concern personally. I'm not for it.
Isn't it interesting?
Because I'm telling, but.
Should we split the, should we do one through six and then have seven as a separate?
Yeah, probably.
So, um, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for items one through six, which would be the minutes through the nominations?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Um, any discussions on the minutes through the nominations? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any extensions?
I'm good, I'm standing.
Um, so let's move on to item number seven for field, which is field trips. There's a camera from Mount Anthony High School and Cedar Grove, New York. This is a choral music program.
Yeah.
At the high school. Can I have a motion? I mean, we have to have a motion before we have discussion, so.
Proceeding, right. Are, are you separating the two now?
Should be. With the one like.
It probably makes sense since.
Okay, same to me. Can I have a motion on seven A, which is the Panama trip for April 2024?
So.
A second.
A second?
Mm-hmm.
Um, any discussion? Even though we just had some, so.
Right. So I guess what is the, like, if there is that concern, what are the thinking that needs to be done?
It's been in a lot of countries. I just was typing in a bunch of countries, and I bet you right now with everything happening in the world.
Right.
I bet you a lot of countries are level two.
Yeah.
But I just looked at Italy.
I just, I went to the, just to, you know, I'm kind of in both worlds right now. I went to the informational session. I am committed to going. I am one of the chaperones there. Well, chaperones, not really chaperones, but adults going.
Because you're not listed as one such.
Um, I, I would. Well, give me my money back. Um, but, um, but, um, you know, it seemed I completely agree with Jim, that the company seemed to be extremely reputable. They seemed to have, like, you know, like, all their ducks in a row. You know, the presentation seemed, you know, like, they had a whole video. They seemed very focused on safety. Like, that was like their biggest, you know, thing that they talked about in their presentation. The group stays together. It's very organized. You know, they, it's very, you know, there's not really points in time where you're just kind of going off on your own. Like, it's, it's very tour-specific, and there's tour guides with each group and, and so forth and so on, and you're all in the same hotel. So I think it sounded very, I had no concern. Just from a board member and as a parent and as somebody who has signed up to go, so I just thought I'd share that with you since I am.
And these trips were suspended due to COVID, not because of concern about safety. That was, well, COVID was safety, but that was, the school has a history of these trips in the past, deprived of COVID.
Leon did provide policy, and it's policy six, two, three, zero, curriculum-based field trips. It reads, "In general, the recommended number of chaperones is eight students to one. In cases of going to a congested area, a city, or overseas, a four-to-one chaperone ratio may be needed, but it is the role of the school administrator to approve the number of chaperones on the trip." So there's, there's some advisements for that, and there's some consideration on the part of the board in this.
Term means they need to one.
Yeah.
But I'm hearing there may be other parents going.
Well, there's, yeah, there's parents going, so.
Okay, cool. So there'll be adults there, but not technically. In addition to the three official chaperones, there will be adults on the trip also.
Yes, yeah.
And that is the same practice as opposed to Canada.
Yeah, that was the same situation, but there was a lot of adults there.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, then we'll go for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? What, Leon, and any extensions? So we'll move on to seven B, the Cedar Grove, New York, Mount Anthony High School trip for April of 2023. And a second? Um, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And any extensions? All right, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
I have a warrant that I'll get you to sign. Really no report this evening. I don't typically give them during reorganization today because I don't have to make some adjustments. I'll meet with Stephanie to, you know, what your agenda priorities would be. I'll be in touch for that. I did attend, along with other members of, Jonathan being one of them, did attend today. Were part of the governor's opioid task force and trying to track the impact on all partners in the Bennington area, not just the school system, healthcare, law enforcement, and then all our NGOs, which non-government organizations. So we had a, a forum today at Bennington College. We had had three meetings prior to that to do the planning for that. And what is coming out of that? Jonathan, do you remember what the, what, what the term was? Not an action committee, but it's.
Alliance or something?
Alliance, project alliance.
Project Alliance.
Thank you. So, uh,
Well, so I reported, so I hope so.
Yeah, I know. We'll see, you know, where that, that's, so this is not a one-and-done initiative. And the governor was there today and shared his commitment. He shared something called a heat map that takes, it's an overlay map of Bennington, and it shows us like, you know, where domestic assault is being reported, where serious crimes are being committed and, and tracking that. And it's to then, you know, there's not enough resources to go around there. So it's, I believe the message is to concentrate the resources on where it means it, and for us, you know, we're very interested in like where that impacts our schools. So I think it was a great start. And we, you know, we've been at it most of February. We had to do a, you know, a problem statement to bring with us today. And then all the groups presented theirs, whether it was healthcare or like I said, law enforcement was there too. So, you know, it's probably some eerie people there. I don't know where it's going, but what we're experiencing in our schools, I'm grateful for any, when there's any other group that wants to partner with us. Because we don't have all the resources that we have, that we really need here within the SU for what we're experiencing in our schools, particularly around student behavior, and what are the causes, what are the root causes of that behavior? So that's it. We are, we're, we're close to wrapping up negotiations with our administrators. We still have not begun negotiations with the support staff, but we did narrow down a couple of dates to get everybody together. Reminder, we do not have teacher negotiations this year. That, that will begin next year, but we do have support staff and your principals and vice principals' negotiation ongoing. Good evening.
Moving on to six for policies imposed, we have policy four, zero, zero, one, for harassment of employees. This is, I would warn the policy. Do you want to speak, Jim, or, and did you work on these policies? Maybe it's you, or?
Yes, I was the board chair of that. But Fran was the person that devoted all, backed the information to Jackie, so since this is a new one, I'll say, she do that, I mean, I'll go through a couple of things, but one, you know, that the name is employee, employee unlawful harassment is the change to the policy. And in this policy, there's a thing to remember, I need to note here, so if you've read it, everybody should have read it in years. Harassment is a form of unlawful discrimination that would not be tolerated in the district. It's unwelcome. Sexual advancements, requests of sexual favors, or other verbal written physical or conduct, concentration, harassment as defined here in and by state and federal law. Intelliation against any person of really good faith allegations of unlawful harassment are against any witness cooperating in the investigations assumed. This policy is prohibited. In this policy, it went on to define the definition for a bunch of things, and it also directed the board to have the superintendent the principals and so forth, make sure that they provided this policy and made it available to everybody in the school areas and home and so forth, so that you can understand what this deals, the seriousness of this policy. It talks about other types of harassment and gender identity. And they, they part of at the end, it's a key thing in here, is that the administrator is responsible for it and taking the actions. But it's the duty of doing the investigation if anything happened along that line. So you need to make sure that, that, I think that's enough of, of that particular policy, so.
Thank you. Do we need a vote to warn the policy? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are people comfortable to warn these together, to warn the two policies? To vote together, okay.
That was one, I just.
That was one. So then I was going to ask the, I was going to bring it. So we have policy five, zero, zero, eight. That is to warn the policy for students, students who are homeless. Do you want to hear some?
Yeah, since this is a new policy and it's the one coming around for the first time, it's important that everybody understands and believes this policy in terms of the state requirements or legal requirements for the students. And it's went on, it's defined what is a homeless student out here and so forth. I think Fran was asked a bunch of questions and so forth before we did this and had this policy come up. So we, we have to be careful about protecting the rights and providing benefits for homeless individuals. You can't just perfectly identify individuals in that nature. So this policy speaks to that. And then make sure that it speaks about what, what benefits and things is equal to everybody else and the protection of those individuals. Thanks.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the warning of policies four, zero, zero, one, and five, zero, zero, eight?
Second.
Any discussion? See none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? And moving on to the administrative report, high school.
I'd like to not read the sports page, but bear with me. I've been a busy bug for folks on the one, one school-related update. First of all, I also want to congratulate the Mount Anthony Wrestling Team. They defended their state title. I believe it's 34th time. They had a number of members who were then qualified to go to New England's. A, a tradition that is unrivaled in the country, and I just want to congratulate both the coach, the staff, and the wrestlers. Definitely a season that I feel the athletes came in with a, a point to prove. Folks felt that they came very close to losing their title last year, and they wrestle, they're a very young team. They're going to get even better as they go along. But I'm very proud of them as they work through a, a tough season and prove themselves once again. Want to congratulate the Mount Anthony Nordic Ski Team. The boys' side defended their state title. The girls' finished second. I'm extremely proud of the girls' team as I don't think they quite had a sense of how good they were going to be at the state race, and they were outstanding. They were only beat by a burly teen, a team that is made up of mostly seniors and a very good team, so they had a great day. The boys' team was the fastest relay team in the state both days. Never witnessed that at races. They sent seven members to the New England team that then helped the state of Vermont win the New England State Championship. And some of you may have been reading about Lou Brizio. He is a new student to Mount Anthony this year. He's a junior. He defended his individual state title in both disciplines, both skate and classic. He also was selected as a member of the New England team that flew to Alaska for the last week, where then he qualified as an All-American in all three events, which, we're checking the history books, but it's been a while since he came in the ski program. Qualified for Junior Nationals and also as an All-American, so we're very proud of him. And 40 members of the community showed up yesterday at Prospect to congratulate him and his family for their commitment. We're happy to have him as a member of MEU. Want to congratulate the cheerleading team. They too traveled to their New England cheer championships over the weekend. They scored an 11th place finish out of 60 teams, which is really amazing. It's a very nice group of students. They've had a very good year, so I congratulate them and their coach. I want to congratulate Ella Palasano. She's a ninth grader. She's indoor track and field. You may have been reading about her in the paper as well. She had a very good state meet. She's been jumping five-one, five-two for the season, which is bumping right up against the school record. And then she proceeded to go to New England's and finish runner-up. She was only beaten. She jumped five-six. The only reason she didn't win the title, she had one more miss than the young lady who won. My understanding is the winner was, is a senior committed to Princeton and track and field, so she did very well. She then traveled to Nationals, where she scored an eighth place. She's again jumped five foot six. The winner jumped five-eight. And she was the only ninth grader at Nationals to jump a height, so she is a very nice human being, a nice article and banner. I appreciate the coverage for that. And congratulate both her, her coaches and her team. Looking forward to her moving outdoors and continuing track and field. Want to thank Dave Frederickson, or congratulate him, inducted Vermont Sports Hall of Fame. Got to read that story, and I'm sure folks, you're all welcome to come on down and see the display case dedicated to Mr. Coach Frederickson and his basketball team. Lots of trophies, lots of memorabilia in there, but congratulations, Coach. It's a big deal. I do have one piece of business, and I'll, I'll provide more details in our next meeting, but the state of Vermont has decided on a replacement for the Sback, which is the standardized test that we took every spring. Traditionally, it is given to night readers and ELA and mathematics. And in 11th grade, you take a science test. A little bit new. Chris, Chris helped me run this at the middle school, so I'm learning this year. But the state has decided to replace that. They gave us an announcement about a month ago. They want it in place by May. So teams in all buildings are kind of working their way through that process. At the high school, our schedule for testing is going to be May 8th through the 12th. And for those not familiar, we observe a two-hour delay schedule at the high school, which means that on the days of freshmen will be there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They come in at a regular school time. Buses will run. We'll serve a breakfast, but they test for the first two hours. Everybody else, 10, 11, and 12, will arrive starting a two-hour delay, so about 9:50, 10 o'clock, and come on in. On Thursday and Friday, 11th graders will join us for testing in the morning, so that means 10th and 12th graders. So that means tenth and twelfth graders are coming in on the delayed schedule. We'll put all this information out in the community. Just so moms and dads, if you have a tenth grader or a twelfth grader, they're not impacted by this testing. So if your kiddo tells you that they got a two hour delay all week, they're not kidding, they, they really do. There's other tests that'll be coming down the pipe. We have A P exams, which are. That week and the week before, we took a really close look at trying not to overlap them for kids. But testing season is upon us and I'll stop there.
Come up. All right, I was just making sure I wasn't jumping in here. So yeah, I, I also have some dates around testing, I'll get to in a moment. Good evening and welcome to board members as well. Winter carnival, which is an event that we held at the middle school for several years. We, with, you know, COVID upon us, we, we had pause on that for a few years. We had it run it for three, we didn't run it for three, three years. And we ran it again on Saturday, this Saturday, the seventeenth. Wrong with that day, eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, sorry. So really, I, you know, wasn't sure with the, with the, you know, not running it for a few years, how, how the turnout would be. And such, it was a really great turnout. There was, you know, I attended myself for a few hours, actually saw Mr. Johnson there with his family. It's nice. Lots of smiling faces, a lot of kids playing games. It's really a lot of it geared towards younger kids, a lot of middle school kids will show up and help a lot of teams, teachers on instructional teams where they're helping. We raffled off twenty baskets that were all arranged and inspired by teams in the school and staff in the school. We had sixteen different carnival game type things that we were running and all instructional teams in the building participated. So it was overall really great, you know, a great afternoon and or morning into afternoon. And I do want to thank Dan Hamadon. And there's a lot of people who were very important to make it happen, but Dan Hamadon, a teacher at the building was, in the building was, you know, really put the lead on organizing things. So I want to thank him for everything that he put into it. As we were talking about briefly before, the Canada trip is another thing that we had done for a number of years. I want to say, you know, it, it went back, you know, twenty years or so. And I talked to Mrs. Austin, who, you know, has worked in the middle school a little bit longer than myself. And she gives me the history report, but we had not run it since twenty twenty, since the, the first year back. So they went Thursday, the March second, came back Thursday, March four. Actually, technically speaking, I think we rolled in March that.
Yeah. By a couple of minutes.
Yeah, by, by a couple of minutes or so, yep. But Mike De Nishatell and Tatiana Case, two foreign language teachers in the building, did a lot of work to organize that and to, you know, make everything happen. And I also want to thank a number of faculty members. I had a few different faculty members who stepped up and went on the trip because we had some illnesses and some other things happen. And some people who were supposed to go couldn't go and, you know, to give those chaperone numbers and such, we had a couple of people step up. One teacher agreed the day before, said, sure, I'll go to Canada and, and, you know, went to Canada, figured it out. That was Mr. Campbell, so thank you to that. To talk about testing, as Tim indicated, his new, you know, testing program that the, the state is using, the B T C A P. We are doing the E L A tests on four twenty five, it's a Tuesday, and four twenty seven, that's a Thursday. The math test, we've also broken up into two different days. That's going to be on May second and May third, it's Tuesday and Wednesday. And then everybody in the building takes those. The science test is only given to eighth graders and that is going to be Tuesday, five nine and Wednesday, five ten. So there's a lot of testing coming up for middle school students. And add in another layer, the, our measures of academic progress, the MAPS test that we also give to monitor student progress as a district level assessment. That is going to be taking place, the, the math test on five twenty three and the reading test on five twenty five. So lots of testing dates coming up. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight was we are back to doing our welcome days for incoming students. So that looks like seventh, excuse me, sixth and seventh graders, because we, we accept both sixth and seventh graders into the building, as you know, at different points. Depending on what elementary school they come from. And we have sixth graders visiting the building on May sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth to hang out and do some visits. And we have incoming seventh graders visiting the building on May eleventh and twelfth. So they're going to be hanging out, doing some tours and getting, you know, acquainted with the middle school life. We also have some open houses that I will, I don't have the date right in front of me, but we have a seventh grade, rising seventh grade open house, rising sixth grade open house. And we'll be communicating those on, you know, website, Facebook, probably a robo email or call as well. So, yeah, I'll cover that. Thank you.
Thank you, we, we don't have a student representative this evening.
We do not.
Stephanie, can I just make a comment?
I just wanted to congratulate the middle school on, on that trip. I thought it, like that Canada trip is going on, it, it was, it's such, I know it's been done for years and I hadn't experienced it. And I just wanted to say, like, it's just, it was such a well organized, well done, you know, so much different culture. And that they tried to trickle in and it was, you know, they kept those kids on task, exactly what they needed to do whenever they needed to do it. The tour company was great. So I just, just wanted to say kudos, well done. I know it's been so super successful for many years and this is why, but just wanted to say from somebody who actually went and participated, I just want to say how.
Well, it's all nerve wracking when we wake up and there's snow on the ground. We have a two hour delay. Oh, everyone, they say.
You might have sent me a text message about that.
Yeah, but everyone was able to, you know, arrive safely without, you know, any pushing or prodding in the trip. Well, I think, I think you guys ended up rolling out like five minutes behind schedule or ten minutes behind schedule. So it was, it was, it was good to work out.
I just wanted to make a shameless plug for one of my articles in the banner. But I went to rock climbing, those are last weekend. They have their state championships, it's a club sport, not, not B P A, hopefully maybe someday, I don't know. But I didn't know a thing about it, but I went up there, it was a great day. If you guys hear anything about interest in rock climbing, definitely try to support it. Like, I don't know if you guys want to ask teachers, like, do you want to start a rock climbing club or if anybody's into it? Because it was a very cool experience. Kind of like I was a powerlifter, it kind of reminded me of that where it's, you're not necessarily competing with the other people. It's more you're competing with yourself and it's, so you might, you might get kids that are more interested in, yeah, just that, that kind of mentality. But also it was great. Another cool thing about it is the males and the females compete together and compete against each other. So there's no concerns over that. And also, one thing I thought was really interesting was they actually helped. They, they, they're partnering up with somebody from another school. And they're like responsible for their safety and then they help each other out. It's just, it's the spirit of cooperation and sportsmanship that we would definitely want to foster in some of our kids and especially kids that might not play another winter sport. So if you guys hear any rumblings or want to start some rumblings, I would definitely recommend it.
Yeah, I do have a couple of people in the building that are certified, we have a rock wall in the building and I have a certification to, to, you know, help other students on it.
It's, it's tough, I don't know if you guys could cooperate with Bern Burton or something like that, but because the events are always up in Rutland, which is the unfortunate part of it. But it's doable, I mean, I mean, cross, cross country skiing and stuff is always on our way too, so.
Yep.
Yeah, nicely done in the article, by the way.
Thank you. I mean, absolutely, I brought it in.
I still read the paper old fashioned way, but I completely forgot. Unified basketball, which has been longstanding at Brattleboro and B B A, had their first practice last week. And we had a very good turnout. We have a number of athletes, we have another of, you know, host or players that support them on the, so it's good, there's good energy. And I very much appreciate to the folks at B B A and Brattleboro for reaching out and supporting us with getting that off the ground.
That's why you guys are doing all this.
Yeah. Practice is supposed to be pretty energizing, pretty positive, so I'm looking forward to attending tomorrow.
Great.
Just a comment, if you don't mind. The Vermont School Board Association strongly endorse and recommend to all of the school boards that they have school representation on our boards. I think most of the school boards and my school board members, I mean, I mean, all of those that I've attended in the national conference, they have students participating at the.
We always did until COVID and I think that's where we got out of the practice. And I know that the, the high school principal is, is, is working on getting a student to come on board. Student, student senate is aware of it, their members are very busy folks, they're also working on, so they might be finding the time to attend regularly, be consistently. But we, you know, we do want to bring that feature back.
Question? Sorry, somebody. Mr. Maine, does it have to be somebody on the student senate?
No, it can be any student actually, but I've traditionally gone there and asked students. Advisor who, Ms. Brigham, who helps advise the student senate is also involved in community based learning. So it sort of allows me to reach a larger pool of students looking to be involved in activities.
I was just wondering, is it just limited or?
No, it is not. It traditionally has been usually a member connected to the senate, but it's not required.
That's something I was really hoping for with this board, that it would move forward with actually student participation. So I'm pleased to hear that they used to be the norm.
We, we always have a student.
Can we add it to on the website that along with board members that you're looking for?
It's always been the principle of the role to get it. So I think he's heard the board's desire to find a student representative. And when we set the agenda, we should start sending agenda. Put, put it back on there and hopefully we'll have a student join us.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just had another follow up, but I'll let you go first.
Um, could we, could it be something that it's a rotation so that you don't, like, it doesn't always have to be the same student? So that there isn't necessarily that, you know, commitment and if they can't go that like there's a pool that you can potentially.
We have had presentations, but we've also had students who committed to the year. There is some benefit for consistent members, so they understand, you know, the board had a good discussion the month before, but we've had both. We definitely have kids.
Yeah, just thinking that if you can't get that commitment for, for full year, that maybe even if you have like three, that between the three. They can cover it.
Yeah, that's good. So I've noted it and I'll remind the principal when we have a reunion meetings.
And I'll hit up my child.
I was reading student. Political about a, an eighth grader.
I, I haven't done it.
I was just going to ask that.
His, the problem is transportation usually, so that's why he's currently been a high school senior who can get themselves to the meeting for an equity piece, so.
If, if think about a way to just have, you know, some, a student from middle school perspective without maybe not a regular rep, but, you know, some student presentation or student report out on something.
May I ask you a question? For the, the high school senior incentive wise, what sorts of incentives do we provide for them? Can we, you said a community service person is involved, are there community service hours that are required for graduation? Can this be?
There are not, but we have students working for a variety of ways to participate. And honestly, I mean, students that I've worked with in the past, you know, they're just interested in the workings of the school board and, you know, how that, how that works. But it's not a kind of, it's not a requirement for graduation.
No, I was just, I was just wondering if there was a way to like entice them.
Oh, sure.
Be like, you know, credit or independent study or community service that's required already or something like that. I'm just trying to think creatively to get kids to want to be here.
We can tell them it looks good on their resume.
Definitely that's. The, the other thought I had is I know Abby just went, I think, I think went up to Champlain for the, I can never remember the, what it stands for, but it's F L B A, I think.
For Southwest, Southwest, right?
Yeah, it's the like Future Leaders of America or something.
Future Business Leaders.
Yeah, um, maybe that group, hitting up that group, maybe another.
Yep.
Pie, because leadership board.
Or National Honor Society.
Yeah, yeah, National Honor Society, that's another one.
Don't ask the debate team though, because it's never good.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, um, committee reports, we have.
So, yeah, I did mention that in your reorganization, what typically happens is the chair will say. Reach out to you who wants to say you have finance.
Yes.
You have education.
Policy.
Policy. Negotiations for the administrator, negotiations for our support staff. And you don't need to appoint somebody for negotiations, the teachers at this time.
Do we need to have a mental discussion right now?
No, that's, that's your appointment as the chair.
Okay.
So you. Email you whoever wants to serve on what committees and then you announce it, it's your, it's your choice.
So everyone will let you know what they're interested in. That would be great.
And can I mention one of them? I'm getting a message here, we love technology. Hello Renee, must be watching from home. One of the things that we didn't do in the beginning, every time we reorganized is the execution of contract language and state language. That has to be voted on every year per sixteen B S A five sixty three, it's the power of school boards. Could I read the motion? To authorize the superintendent or his or her designate to execute on behalf of the school district purchase orders, agreements for consulting services, grant agreements. And other contracts arising affecting the routine operation of the school district, Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union. The superintendent or designate shall not execute any contracts resulting from the public bid process, any employment agreements or any long term contract without the express authority of the board. This is something all boards will, not every year when they reorganize.
Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Thank you, Renee.
Certainly, all in favor? I mean, oppose, the extension. Thank you. So for chair's report. The item number A on the agenda is the agenda format, meeting expectations, date and time. Does this time and like time and?
So it, it, I'm assuming it's going to be, we're going to.
This is, this is going because of the.
It's not going to be Wednesday, it's back to the original, so.
Yeah, it's third Wednesday of the month at six o'clock.
Okay. Does that still work for this board? Do I need to have a motion for it or can we? Chair's report, I, the, the, do you want to speak to the S V S U website review meeting minutes?
Basically, what B was to address, we keep having a lot of individuals and you'll see as the chair contact. You about information about the board and we have no way to find, they don't know how to find. And board members needed to know. This information, so what I was asking the superintendent to do was to be prepared here tonight, but he wanted to delay this and said we get the.
I said, we'll do a future agenda item, we'll have our website. Where you come to a meeting, we'll do an agenda, we'll put it up on the screen and for those who are home and those are here, we'll walk through the website. And, and we'll get feedback too on what people seem to have trouble navigating. I don't have trouble navigating, but I, I'm on it a lot, right? So it's, that doesn't mean it's, doesn't need some tweaking or, or isn't perfect.
I'll tell you, it took me a long time in the beginning to figure it out.
So it's the main thing on here was how, people always ask questions about the policies and the policy of this board. Main function to be able to know what's on them and steer people into the right ones. And so the other one was minute, minutes from our meetings. We have to provide records of what we do here and restore them. And so someone was asking me about something that took place in September. And I said, oh, why didn't we go to the minutes and you had to go back and find? So I had to go on and, and go through the layers to find the minutes, to be able to read them again, to find out who was present and what things along that line. And so I'm saying, and that was another board member, I'm saying, wait, but you needed to know that this is stuff that you need to know.
We can, I mean, I, I got to the board minutes of the Mount Anthony board in three clicks. So it's just a matter of.
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you think that sends forward?
Yeah, we'll put on, we'll have, we'll have agenda, we'll have, probably have Katie West here at a meeting and give a presentation and navigation of the website.
And then the chair's report, item C, the board training.
I'll give you that, you'll hear from the Vermont School Board Association, the chair and the superintendent have to go to a, a training every year. And it's, I think it's a virtual and online version of it. And other board members can go too, but you'll, we'll start seeing that in the.
And other board members can go too, but you'll, we'll start seeing that in the Vermont School Board Association manuals.
So the one, but the superintendent and the board chair is only for that. It's others that are on, and there's one listed, I didn't put the date, it's one coming up soon, have the reorganization. That you really need to go to, to talk about what it is that you need to be doing in terms of that. So, but it's the Vermont School Board Association.
Thank you. So we have nothing else, so best we'll move on to the FYI. Is this, it's my understanding that we have a budget status report located on the web. We don't need a motion, this is a consent agenda, okay. Are there any comments on the budget status report? We have a student enrollment report for March of 2023 that's also in the board packet.
Yep.
Sure.
I just wanted to speak to this, and we put it in there as an FYI. This is really important. Someone asked me this past weekend about students and whether truancy was involved in the levels because of the number of students walking the streets of staying out of school. If you look at that number, we're down in the eighties for the school attendance. And so we need to be addressing that in terms of how we educating the students if we got almost fifteen percent of our kids not present in the school on a monthly basis. And that's stuff that I was thinking that we needed to try to look at as a board in terms of education, even though we say it's FYI. As a reason, we're not doing us any good, we're not educating the students.
Any other comments or discussions on the student enrollment? And then also included in the packet was the winter coaching nominations. So just to clarify, we don't need to not, we don't need to vote on the coaching assignments?
No, this is requested information.
Okay.
We haven't got the spring ones yet, we just.
I just got them today.
You got them.
Yeah.
We haven't.
I, right, I just got the email before, right before the meeting.
So is that something that will be included in the next?
Yeah, because I would have forwarded it to you now, but the email said there also, there needs to be, it's not. It may be a change, just, yeah.
Any conversation around the winter coaching?
We need, I see coaches, but then this particular thing represents clubs as well, and we needed to see that. And I was looking at the student handwork and different things that are talking about what happens out in that area. At least athletics, handwork is one of those that speaks to them. So we, we supposedly free you both, the coaches, just as need void, we during club representation out here. We need to know what's going on in that area.
We have made it through the agenda, are there any other topics? Can I have a motion?
All in favor?
Thanks.
In the first section. Thank you.
Tuesday, before you guys. Did you go to the? Yes.
He wants to read this.